Festerson.
Here.
Gurnat.
Here.
Jaram.
Milton.
Pauls.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the place of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Rich Pauls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Within this last week or so, I was reading an article in the World Herald by Jeff Beals. He's a local businessman and also an author. And I read part of it, and I think he may have used somebody else's ideas, but I thought it was sort of intriguing idea. Most of us who are in the decision-making roles or even in life secretly want to be a hero. And perhaps we ought to take a look, a different look at that. Instead of being the hero, we should be providing other people the opportunities for them to become heroes. So today, as I'm looking out over the audience today, I see a lot of people who do have the capacity not to be the hero themselves, but to help somebody else become a hero. Thank you.
City Clerk certifies publication of daily record official newspaper on June 24th. Notice for a pre-council and regular city council meeting June 28, 2016. Current copy openings act post-staying white binder on the East Wall of the legislative chambers.
Yeah, right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the meeting of the, this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to please turn off or silence any of your electronic devices. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on filing and planning board attachments, item number five, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Falcon Ridge to allow for a convenience storage facility located northwest of 180th and Harrison Streets to provide site development standards. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B, Communications opposing. C, is a document submitted by the applicant.
Public hearing on agenda, item number five is today. Proponents, please.
David Fier, 2111 South 67th Street, here on behalf of Dragon Storage. We have been working with city staff. We've submitted revised exhibits and additional information regarding the compliance of the buildings with Article 22 of the zoning ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there motion? Second, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is passed, seven to zero. Item number six, ordinance to rezone property located at 128 Cedar Street from General Industrial District to R4 Single Family Residential District. High-density, A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number six is today. Are there any proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion?
To approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item six, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is passed, seven to zero. Seven through 10 are one case. Seven is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 24th and Coming Streets from R7 Medium Density Multi-family Residential District, Community Commercial District and General Industrial District to Community Commercial District. Eight is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-1 PL District of Area Civic Importance Overlay District to incorporate into that district these property. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nine is resolution of the preliminary plat entitled Armstrong's First Edition Replat Two is hereby accepted. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 10 is the replat entitled Armstrong's First Edition Replat Two is hereby approved. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number seven through 10 are today. Are there any proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
To approve.
Moved and seconded to approve seven through 10. There are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Pass.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Jaram passes second time. Oh, Jaram, I'm sorry. Festerson passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. Seven through 10 are passed, six zero one passing. I'm so used to you passing.
(laughing).
Item number 11, ordinance to adopt (laugh) a parking overlay district in an R4 35 Single Family Residential District, high-density, located 828, 24 and 826 South 41st Street to approve the parking plan. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
To approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item 11, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
11 is passed, seven to zero. Items 12 through 15 are one case. 12 is ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 49th and Dodge Street from General Commercial District to R8 High Density Multi-family Residential District. Property is also located within existing ACI-250 Overlay District. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 13 is ordinance to approve a planned unit redevelopment overlay district in an R8 High Density Multi-family Residential District. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 14 is resolution of the preliminary plat entitled Dundee Flats, along with attached conditions, hereby accepted. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 14 is resolution of the plat transmitted here with entitled Dundee Flats is hereby approved. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 12 through 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West End Road, appearing on behalf of Sage Capital, the applicant in this particular case. This is the zoning and plating portion of the project that's before you today for final approval in public hearing. Obviously, the redevelopment plan was before you, I believe, on January, or June 14th, and the redevelopment agreement, which will be the last portion of this particular project before it begins construction, we're thinking in August of this year, will be before you in a couple of weeks. So with that, I think everyone has seen pretty much what the proposed plans are, and we're simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
To approve.
Moved and seconded to approve items 12 through 14, no lights, roll call. 12 through 15, I'm sorry, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
12 through 15 are passed, seven to zero. Item number 16, ordinance to rezone property located at 4210 Ohio Street from R4 35 Single Family Residential District, high-density to R4 Single Family Residential District, high-density. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 16 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
16 is passed, seven to zero. Item number 17, ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district property located at 5638 Center Street. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 17 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 17, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
17 is passed, seven to zero. Item number 18, ordinance to rezone property located at 6105 Weir Street from Development Reserve District and General Industrial District to General Industrial District. Property is also located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 18 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 18, there are no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is passed, seven to zero. Item number 19, ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district property located at 6401 Sorensen Parkway. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 19 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 19, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
19 is passed, seven to zero. Item 20, ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 124th Plaza and West Dodge Road from Mixed Use District to R4 Medium Density Multi Family Residential District. Property is also located within an ACI-4 PL Overlay District. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Boozer, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the developer, Royce Candlewood. Be happy to answer any questions. You're on a roll, so I won't slow you down. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 20, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
20 is passed, seven to zero. Item number 21, ordinance to rezone property located at 2617 North 138th Street from R3 Single Family Residential District, Medium Density to R4 Single Family Residential District, High Density. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Douglas Thieson, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I'll echo Mr. Boozer's statement.
(laughing) Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 21, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is passed, seven to zero. 22 through 26 are one case. 22 is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 204th and F Streets from Agricultural District to Development Reserve District. 23 is to rezone to R4 Single Family Residential District, High Density. 24 is to rezone to R5 Urban Family Residential District. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 25 is resolution of the plat entitled Grandview Ridge Estates is hereby approved. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 26 is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 22 through 26 are today. Proponents, please.
Jim Boozer, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the developer, 204 F Street. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any on this new development. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 22 through 26, there are no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat. Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
20 through 26 are passed, seven to zero. Item, Special Use Permit Automotive Sales, item number 27, resolution of special use permit application for a special use permit to allow automotive sales in a community commercial district for the property located at 4819 South 107th Avenue is hereby approved, and permits inspections is directed to issue the necessary permits therefor. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 27 is today. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there motion? Mr. Pauls.
Yes, since this is a special use permit, you would think that there would be somebody who'd come forth.
He's here.
Okay, could I?
Peter Kvitkovsky, 6419 North 131st Street. I represent the applicant.
May I ask this question? This automobile sales is going to be inside the building? Is that what I understood?
We are, we're, we do not sell vehicles. We help people list vehicles for sale.
Inside the building?
Yes.
Okay, so there's not a lot of?
There's no vehicles that are allowed.
That's, I wanted to double check. Thank you.
Is there motion?
I move.
Moved and seconded to approve item 27, there are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
27 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 28, resolution of special use permit application for a major amendment to a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in a community commercial district located at 3603 North 222nd Street is hereby approved, and for instance, inspections is directed to issue the necessary permits therefore. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 28 is today. Proponents, please.
Douglas Thieson, 10836 Old Mill Road, here to answer any questions you may have on the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 28, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
28 is adopted, seven to zero. We'll take item 29 and 30 together. It's one applicant for two licenses. Paragon Dundee, 5018 Underwood Avenue, Suite 104, Class C liquor license, no application, new location. And 30 is same applicant, same location for catering license.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 29 and 30 are today. Proponents, please.
William Thieson, 200 South 31st Avenue, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Thieson, thanks for coming down today, and thanks for your commitment to Dundee across the street now from your original concept pitch there, which has been amazingly successful. So we look forward to the next concept here, too. The second of four new restaurants happening in Dundee in the next six months, and much anticipated inside this new $15 million building that you've been a part of. Restaurant, retail, also apartments on top, and physician's offices. So I just wanted to give you this chance to tell us some more about the restaurant for those that are watching at home, and give you a little chance to give a sales pitch, which I know you're good at.
I'll make it very quick. Mitch, what a great idea. Thank you very much. This building is quite a commitment to our community and to Dundee, and it was done by Dr. Davy. He did it exactly as planned. He didn't, you know, some people get to the end of the project, and they run out of ideas, they run out of time, they're just tired. And they say, well, we don't need those awnings, we don't need that lattice work around the windows, it'll be just fine. Well, we shook hands, and that's how we made the deal. And he looked me in the eye, and he says, as you see this, it'll be built. And it was. I might mention that every square inch of that building is leased happily. And my restaurant, Paragon, my next idea, I have one more in me, is a brainchild of myself and John Ray, the chef from M's Pub. What a tragic story that was in early part of this year. And about three weeks afterwards, I contacted him, and he said, I can talk to you about this as soon as I get all my kitchen help employed. 10 days later, he called me, he says, it's time for a cup of coffee. His wife is a very achieved pastry chef. They've got a young child, seven-month-old little girl. It's going to be Delta Tide Water Charleston-type food. It's comfort as opposed to uncomfortable. And who doesn't like that? We'll open in the middle of August, I think around the 16th, 15th, 16th. We have a hiring job fair this week at Dundee Bank. For anybody that's looking for a good job, no slackers need apply. 10 o'clock till 1:00 on Friday, 9:30 till 12:00 on Saturday. Jeff Relles is kind to invite us in, so we're going to conduct it right in the, we've been there before, councilman, the conference room at Dundee Bank. So I thank you for your continued support, and just wait until we open. There'll be a line hopefully down to Elmwood Park. Thank you.
I think there will be. Congratulations. A motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve, Mr. Jaram.
And I'm just glad the applicant sees the wisdom of having the job fair in my district, so that you can get the best people to come over to Pete's district to work.
We'll, we'll talk. But moved and seconded, no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
29 and 30 are adopted, seven to zero. Item number 31, Fuzzy's Taco Shop, 17305 Davenport Street, Class I liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 31 is today. Proponents, please.
Justin Heinsohn, representing Fuzzy's Taco Shop. We're going to answer any questions you guys might have about our concept.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Milton.
Well, since you brought it up, I just wanted to know, what is your concept?
It is fast casual Mexican. We sell kind of a Baja Street-style taco. Our concept, it's really in and out. We'll make our tacos, you're in, out, 15, 20 minutes. Come in, get drinks, get an appetizer while your food's getting made. It should get made in six to seven minutes, then in and out on a day. So kind of that trend that's coming on, coming along lately with that whole fast casual kind of people on the go-go-go lately. So you can get quality tasteful food at, you know, a cheap price, which we feel, you know, is something that's needed out there, to look point in that area.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
You sold it very well.
All right.
(laughing). Good work.
Is there motion?
To be approved?
Second.
Moved and, moved and seconded to approve item 31, there are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
31 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 32, Tokyo Sushi, 1215 Howard Street, Class I liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 32 is today. Proponents, please.
Chris Astwick, 409 South 17th Street, Suite 500, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Tokyo Sushi, 1215 Howard Street. This is the manager of the applicant, Mr. Randy Gow, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Appearing on behalf of the applicant Tokyo Sushi, twelve fifteen Howard Street, this is the manager of the applicant, Mr. Randy Gow, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item thirty-two, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-two is adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-three, Jefferson's Restaurant, one hundred seventy-five, twenty, Wright Street. Request permission for a change of location of their present Class I, Class C liquor license to five ten South Thirteenth Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item number thirty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Patty Duncan, um, representing Make Your Own Luck, doing business as Jefferson's Restaurant, five ten South Thirteenth Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jaram?
Yes, um, I think that there's some issues that need to be resolved with regard to the applicant and the finance department. Given that we don't meet next week, I would request a two-week layover to allow time for the applicant to meet with and to resolve those issues with the finance department.
I have an appointment on Thursday.
Great.
So, it's been moved and seconded to layover two weeks. Moved and seconded to layover two weeks, uh, no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-eight's laid over two weeks, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thirty-three.
Item thirty-three, thirty-four, Fox and Hound English Pub and Grill, five oh six North Hundred Twenty Street. Request permission to appoint John Howard, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number thirty-four is today. Proponents, please.
Uh, John Howard, uh, five oh six South Hundred Twenty, North Hundred Twenty Street, here, uh, to be the liquor license manager.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. There a motion, number thirty-four?
I wouldn't move.
Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-four, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
No.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
I'm gonna say, uh, I'm gonna say yes, but I would like to reserve a comment afterward.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes. Ms. Ms. Melton?
Uh, thank you, and I understand that there were some issues here. I just want to say that the reason I am approving this, first, it's in, here in my district, the restaurant has always been a very good, um, restaurant, and I believe that some of the reasons that we've got some no's, um, are for some, some issues going on, but I guess I believe in our constitution and I believe in innocent until proven guilty, and I'm gonna stand by that.
Thank you.
It's adopted, five to two.
Thank you. It's been adopted, five to two.
Yep. Item thirty-five, uh, YFC Incorporated, seven two five North Fourteenth Street. Request permission for a specialized license for a concert at Stinson Park, sixty-seven oh seven Center Street on August twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, from eleven a.m. to twelve midnight. The music will end at twelve midnight.
Public hearing on agenda, item thirty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Pat LeJure, three two one, South Fifty-seventh Street.
Uh, Aaron Shaddy, one one nine one two, Timber Ridge Drive.
Lauren Schumberg, one three one nine, Levittown Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who, I'm assuming that you answer any questions we might have?
We'd love to.
Okay. Uh, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks a lot. Mr. Chairman, first.
Oh, you were on, okay.
And then it disappeared.
No, I took it, I thought it was from the last one, so, yeah, my bad.
I liked it better when I was in control. So, the Omaha Music Fest, um, at Exarment Village, you've had wonderful success. You sold out last year. You're kind of transitioning into the new leadership team. Um, you've run a first-class event. Will you be continuing the same great show, same arrangement setup?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, uh, for, for the comments. We're coming up, uh, on our eighth annual festival. Uh, last year, as you mentioned, was our seventh, um, and it was the first year that we sold out. We will have a total of twelve acts, nine, uh, national acts and three local, um, and, um, in case you guys don't know, we are a nonprofit. Uh, we're put together by a board that volunteers countless hours, and then maybe the most remarkable piece of it is that we have more demand for volunteers, over three hundred volunteers to help out the day of show than we actually have slots. So, it's a, it's a coming together of the community, it's a celebration, and, uh, we're, we're grateful for the success that we've had.
The, in the, the thing that's most appealing is to see the, from last year, over five thousand with your volunteers, that, of young people in the city, even letting older people like Councilman Festerson and me in. Very nice of you. Although, we try to stay to the side and not get in the way of what they call the pit, I guess. Um, it's a fun day, it's a fun event, and it's needed in the city to, uh, give our young people the type of attractions and amenities in a city of our size that they're looking for. So, you do a great job, and I'm pleased to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just add, uh, similar comments to Mr. Jaram's and say what a great job you've done in taking the initial vision and making it a huge success with the first sellout last year that you mentioned, and a huge amount of those folks coming from out of town to Omaha just for this event, which is a big deal. Uh, but I also mentioned that we have two fellow drummers at the stand here, and Mr. LeJure still plays, and I found out yesterday, Mr. Shaddy plays, or at least he needs to start playing again.
Past tense, past tense, right.
So, I'll get you doing that after this year's festival.
There you go.
All right. Thanks, motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-five, there are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-six through thirty-nine are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers forty through fifty-four today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve items forty through fifty-four, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Forty through fifty-four, adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule seven H, due to no meeting being held July fifth, two thousand sixteen, the third reading on agenda items number fifty-five through sixty-three shall be held on July twelfth, two thousand sixteen. The public hearing on these items are today. Ordinance on second reading, planning board attachments, item fifty-five, ordinance vacating a portion of Eleventh Street right away, lying in Douglas County, Nebraska, north of Mason Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item number fifty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Fifty-six is ordinance approving a combined sewer outflow grant award contract between the city and the Nebraska Department of Natural Resources to finance the construction of combined sewer separations and their related water quality improvement projects.
Public hearing on agenda, item number fifty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-seven, ordinance to approve an agreement for the sale of city-owned real property, for the sale of twenty-two eleven North Thirty-third Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda, item number fifty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-eight, ordinance to transfer unaccounted appropriations in the two thousand sixteen budget of City Omaha from the Human Resources Department to the Public Works Departments, uh, for the purpose of moving the budget funding for safety inspector.
Public hearing on agenda, item number fifty-eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-nine, ordinance to approve amendment to the agreement with Allegiant Creighton Health to provide for an extension of the agreement that establishes the employee assistance program for an additional period of three years.
Public hearing on agenda, item number fifty-nine is today. Proponents, please.
Uh, Mickey Frost, Human Resource Director, this is for our employee assistance program, and I ask your favorable consideration for extending this for three more years.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty, ordinance to-
I'm sorry, I got a light. Mr. Gurnat? Sorry.
Mickey, I forbid, that's all right, that's okay. I'm, I'm just disappointed that we can't, these are all of our directors back here, and we have a director sitting out in the audience. I mean, couldn't anybody find a chair back here for her? I mean, for crying out loud, she's a director of department.
Thank you.
Who are, who are our members of the commission? Building Commission, right? You guys can't get another chair.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Item sixty, ordinance to amend section-
You're welcome. I, I, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Mr. President.
Twenty-three, one seventy-seven, by changing the salaries of the employment classification on a civil engineer one, civil engineer two, civil engineer three, civil engineer four.
Public hearing on agenda, item number sixty is today. Proponents?
Good afternoon, Jim Begley, City of Omaha Human Resource Department. I'd just like to give you a brief background on why this item is before you. This ordinance addresses a critical business need of the city. This has been an ongoing issue with the City Human Resource Department and Public Works Department retaining and recruiting these positions for a number of years. We held a meeting in January of two thousand and fifteen with representatives of the HR Department and the Public Works Department. Present were Mr. Stube, Director Frost, and other representatives from each department. And at that time, we formulated a plan to have a salary survey conducted to address the, the need of recruitment and retaining positions. And we discussed this issue and the American, A-C-E-C-K, the American, what is it, what's the acronym? American Council of Engineering Companies of Omaha. Thanks, Todd. Um, they conducted a salary survey with eight comparable cities in the Midwest and also private firms in the Omaha area and the state of Nebraska. And that survey found that our engineering salaries are below market by as much as twenty-three percent. So, we're here to answer any of your questions about this increase in the pay ranges for the civil engineer positions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Todd Fitzher with Public Works. I am just here as a proponent and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton?
I guess I just have a question, and, and, Mr. Begley, if you can answer, how many positions do we have open that we're in need of filling right now?
Um, Todd, you want? Right now, I believe we have, we have, uh, we have seven engineers, seven CE twos that are currently open, one CE three, one CE four, and there will be two additional possible CE twos in the two thousand and seventeen budget. Those are all open at this time.
Those are all engineering positions open with the city?
Yes.
How many total, yeah, how many total engineers are there?
Nine. Total engineers, the, the entire count, I, I'm sorry, I'd have to go back through my budget and check that exactly. Of the CE twos, there's twenty, and we are down seven.
Okay, I mean, that, that's a good example.
Yes.
Um, and how long have we been in this kind of, that, to me, almost is kind of a dire need.
It is a dire need, and that's how it was presented to our HR department. I would date back to two thousand and thirteen, probably, when we started to lose people. It's about the time the, the economy recovered from two thousand and nine. The consulting engineering firms, uh, started to pick back up their business, the developing communities, things like that. We started to lose people then. We've also lost people just through attrition and retirement, and we've been unable to replace a lot of those folks.
Okay, and, and looking at that, I, I mean, obviously, there is a significant need, but are any of the projects that we currently have, is anything being delayed right now because of the lack of engineers?
We're doing the very, we're doing the very best we can, and we're reaching out to the consulting community, but certainly, when you're, when you're down that level, uh, nine professional civil engineer positions, it, it is a challenge, especially when, at this time of year, when you have people that, that are taking vacations and things like that, certainly, it is a challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Pauls?
One more quick, I'm sorry. I was just gonna add, um, please know that the request before you does not bring the salaries up to the private sector. It brings us competitive to, to attract applicants.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. How did you come to this question? You know, it sort of surprises me, because, uh, when I listen to talk radio, like, answer papers, that government is supposed to be, because, uh, it's an easy job, they're overpaid.
I mean, I hear that all the time, and especially, I mean, I hear it. So, you're telling me we're having a hard time finding people in some of these positions because of our salary?
Councilman, we've, we've been turned down for five positions where we've offered candidates the job, and they have said, I, I just can't take it at this pay level.
Okay.
So, I, that is what I'm telling you.
Well, I appreciate that, and the reason I'm stating this, because, uh, I just, in the past, anyway, I've heard so many things about how poorly government is ran and overpaid and all that. Apparently, that's not always true. So, sometimes, when you listen to, to some of these talk radio shows, uh, people ought to put sort of, sort of those things in balance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jaram?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Frost?
Mickey?
Ms. Frost?
Oh, they found a chair.
She moved up.
This is amazing.
See how fast the building commission members here work?
Hey, y'all see a couple more off there?
Okay.
This is your building commission at work.
It's, uh, it's a good day for women professionals in Omaha. Dignity and respect.
I, I was not excluded. I, I mean, I, I chose to sap, sit there, so.
Okay. Although, there wasn't a chair.
Mickey Frost, Human Resource Director.
Um, this raises, you know, this raises an important issue, that I think that between what Mr. Begley's testimony was, and Mr. Fitzher's, and the questions from Councilmember Pauls, it got me thinking, if, if we're having a hard time recruiting in, in the professional positions, we've also heard we've had a hard time recruiting in the rank-and-file positions. So, at both ends of the, of the labor spectrum, uh, Public Works has told us, whether it's the, the fleet drivers and, and, and laboring hands of the city, um, so that got me thinking, what, what salary surveys or hourly surveys are you doing for compensation at the other end of the spectrum to make sure that the city can better recruit and, and retain and employ, uh, people on that hourly scale? Or are there no surveys going on right now in that?
Mickey Frost, Human Resource Director, is, as you know, as a general rule, salaries are subject of collective bargaining. As we identify those positions where we can't recruit and retain, uh, individuals, we have, uh, done salary surveys on those, and, uh, we've brought a number of those positions to you. A couple of weeks ago, it was the mechanics, the aviation mechanics, and this whole group of, of engineers. So, we've been selective in terms of, uh, what jobs, um, we're asking for changes in the pay.
About how many open positions are there in the city right now that are being advertised to try to be filled?
Geez, I don't know.
A dozen?
Yeah.
So, and nine of them are in this one division, or are these not even being advertised right now?
Uh, Jim Begley, City Human Resource. I don't believe at this time, they've been put in the hopper to be posted. Is that, is that accurate, Todd?
That is correct. Those nine positions that are currently open are not currently being advertised. They have been advertised. We've been unable to fill, uh, five to six of them historically. Some of them have, have been advertised a number of times, so we have chosen to hold off until this decision is made, and then we'll, we'll take another run at it.
And your name's-
So, they're not currently being advertised, is my answer.
And your name, sir?
I'm sorry, Todd Fitzher with Public Works. Thank you.
Well, you know, there's two issues. There's the issue of can we, uh, attract and hire employees for our various positions, whether they be professional or whether they be hourly? And, um, with this number of adjustment ordinances that have come through, I, I see the effort to try to be more competitive. You acknowledge, Mr. Begley, that this won't get us up on these positions to the private sector, so you're still gonna be somewhat at a disadvantage from, you know, your competitors out in the private sector who are hiring engineers. And then I wonder, as we get into budget time in each department, when I hear that there's these critical dire needs, but they're just budgeted but unfilled positions that aren't being advertised, uh, you know, beyond notice, each director, you better have an accounting for, if you have budgeted but unfilled positions, to have a real good explanation as to why. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just one question for you all, uh, just in terms of the number, the individuals here that you're asking for, are these union positions?
Simtech.
Yes, they're in the Simtech bargaining unit.
During the Simtech unit?
Correct.
Okay. Um, what does that do in terms of our collective bargaining, then? If we're, if, if we're at a certain number for those in the collective bargaining unit, and we're changing, and we're adding numbers to these positions here, and they're all part of the collective bargaining organization, what are we doing to, I mean, how are we going around the collective bargaining agreement?
Jim Begley, City Human Resources. There have been discussions with representatives of the Simtech bargaining unit, and I'll, I'll defer to Ms. Frost.
And they have not objected to the change in the pay.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
And, Mr. Jaram, I do want to address a point you brought up. In the, in recent years, when we have posted and advertised for civil engineer positions, there have been extraordinary, extraordinary efforts made to post a position, to advertise in national publications. We thought of anything and everything to try to attract locally, Midwest, nationwide, unfortunately, to no avail, or to little avail, I should say.
The, but since you make that comment, I mean, how far in percentage-wise below the private sector will these increases still be below? I mean, does that, does that make sense?
Sure. Jim Begley, City Human Resources, um, the greatest gap we saw was about twenty-three percent. These, if these ranges are increased, they increase from eight percent to thirteen percent. So, it, it halves the, the largest gap in, I think, the civil engineer three position, which is the widest.
Eight to thirteen percent below what the private sector's paying-
Correct.
For that-
These, these will raise the ranges eight to thirteen percent.
Okay, so they'll still be, uh, fifteen on the high-end percent below what the private sector's paying for that, to a low of, uh, twenty-three minus eight, fifteen, fifteen down to about ten, roughly.
Jim Begley, City Human Resources, we didn't feel we could make the entire leap to try to get to, to full-market comparison, so, uh, we believe that an incremental increase would, would be most effective at this time.
Councilman Mickey Frost, Human Resource Director, if you look at total compensation, the city has a, a more generous benefit package and a pension plan that the private sector does not have. So, in terms of total compensation, it makes us much more competitive with the private sector and with our comparable cities.
Well, I'd be interested in receiving, now that we know with these raises, these positions will be re-advertised, uh, just how many applicants we get and, um, how that process goes, because I guess the proof will be in what we see in terms of, um, responses to the ads. And if we still don't get a pool for these, did you say nine positions, or seven in the one and two in the other?
We have, this year, we have seven CE twos presently open, one CE three and one CE four. Next year, we're looking at the additional, of two additional CE two positions in the proposed seventeen budget, so that would be nine CE twos for next year.
And it takes, on average, about how many months to run the, from advertising to testing to interviewing to extend an offer, Mr. Begley?
Jim Begley, City Human Resources, it could take up to three to four months.
And does that process impair the city's hiring ability? The, the length of time that it takes?
I, I'm sure it has, and other processes we've had have gone longer for, for various reasons.
Does the private sector take that long?
I would imagine not.
And so, what is your explanation for the length of time, and what, what is being maybe looked at in terms of streamlining that process?
Mickey Frost, Human Resource Director, the private sector does not have the same statutory requirements that the city has. Uh, we have an obligation to determine merit and fitness based upon validated testing instruments, um, so that process does take longer, um, than the private sector.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that we're looking at ways where the competitive disadvantages, where we're really behind the curve, so to speak, of the private sector in recruiting and attracting the best talent. At least, I, I'm comfortable that you're looking at those things, but I, I would like a report when the date of posting on these positions and the date it closes, how many applied? Thank you.
Let, let me ask my question a little bit differently. Uh, engineer ones, how many do you have? If you don't know the number, just-
I, I don't, I don't have all of those numbers broken.
But, uh, here, let me, let me, let me cut to the-
We have twenty engineer twos I can-
Okay, let me cut to, let me cut to the chase of what I'm asking here, because you're asking for these individuals that we're currently hiring, but you have people that are currently on staff, right?
Yes, sir.
Are they going to get the same-
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
That was the intent.
That's what I wanted to get at, thank you. No further lights, next item.
We'll take items sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three, they're all related. Sixty-one is ordinance to approve a lease agreement with Capital District Parking for a lease of certain premises adjacent to Interstate eighty, four eighty, and located between Eighth and Tenth Streets north of Capitol Avenue. Sixty-two is ordinance to approve an airspace lease agreement with Department of Roads in the state of Nebraska for lease of certain premises between Interstate four eighty, located between Eighth and Tenth Streets, and north of Capitol Avenue. Sixty-three is ordinance to approve a sublease of two airspace lease agreements between the city, Department of Roads, and Capital District Parking for certain premises located adjacent to Capital District.
Public hearing on agenda items number sixty-one through sixty-three are today proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Appeal bid rejection, item number sixty-four, Elliott Sanitation Equipment appeals the rejection of the bid of May twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, for regenerative air street sweeper project.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-four, is today proponents please?
Jeff Kellison. Sir? Jeff Kellison, twelve forty-five Dawes Avenue, representing Elliott Equipment. We received a letter rejecting our bid, I turned it into the factory, they answered the questions to the rejection, I resubmitted it back, and surprised I ended up here. Did you guys receive copies of the letter? And so, I've never been here before, so just here to answer questions, I'm not really fighting it, because we truly believe in bid specifications and writing them and meeting them, but when submitted to the factory, they thought these were minor, wanted me to address them, show up and show you guys.
Who's the department that let the bid?
Probably Public Works Streets.
Mr. Stube?
I'm Stube, Public Works, so I've got Mark McCoy here, Mark handles the development of our specifications, and also have Austin Rouser here. It's his staff that are using that piece of equipment, so I'll have Mark come up and address that.
Mark McCoy, City Omaha Fleet Management, here to answer any questions you may have.
Just wanted to, I guess we're, because of the bid rejection, I guess the question is, what are, what are some of the reasons for the bid rejection?
Well, the main things was, they didn't meet several items that we identified that we felt were significant deviations from the specification. The first item was, we asked for air suspension on the truck, and they bid a spring-type suspension, we felt an air suspension was a better fit for this application. Air suspensions are available to all manufacturers, it's nothing that anybody couldn't put on their truck, but they chose not to bid it with an air suspension, so that was a deviation from the specification. The second item was, we bid that it has to utilize non-metallic stainless steel for the hopper unit, the reason why that's important to us is magnetic stainless steel rusts, it's got carbon in it, it's a high carbon content, so it'll rust. Non-metallic stainless is called three oh four stainless, it will not rust, it'll never rust, we keep our vehicles for a long time, and we felt that was important, so we don't have rust issues with this hopper. They claim they offered a lifetime warranty on it, but that wasn't identified anywhere in the bid that I saw, and besides, even with a lifetime warranty, if it does rust out, we gotta send it back to the factory, get it fixed, then we have downtime for that vehicle, so that's why we specified the non-metallic three oh four stainless. Couple of other items that they took exception to was, we asked for a hydraulic-driven belt, or hydraulic-driven fan unit, this is a street sweeper, it's got a big fan that blows air down on the ground, picks up the material and blows it back into the hopper. There's a fan belt-type unit, we asked for a hydraulic-driven unit, we looked at a couple different units, we looked at a belt-driven, we looked at a hydraulic-driven, we felt the hydraulic-driven was better suited for us, it seemed like a safer, safer unit, because you can stop that fan from running when you're, when you're dumping the, the unit, so that's why we asked for that, they took exception of that, and then bid a belt-type unit. Those are the main items.
Okay, and all of these were specified in the bid document?
All these were specified in the bid document, and in my opinion, they all would add cost to the vehicle, if sprung suspension versus an air suspension typically is, is more, air suspension is typically more expensive. Three oh four stainless versus four oh four, whatever type of stainless that, that they built, three oh four is typically more expensive, so when you have all them items, it adds to the cost of the vehicle, so.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Grenat?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, how many street sweepers does the city have right now?
Four, four in service right now.
And, when I was reading the paperwork, the ones that you currently have now are different from what you're asking, is that correct?
Correct, they're a different style street sweeper, they're a cleated belt style, they have a belt that runs, that the material is pushed onto that belt, and it picks it up and dumps it in the hopper, this is called a regenerative air-type sweeper. Street departments demoed a couple of them, and they're really impressed with the way they work, it's, like I said, it's actually a big blower that blows air down, picks the material up and blows it back into the hopper, and that air just keeps recirculating through the, through the unit.
Okay. And then, looking at this, you would be purchasing one?
Correct, one unit.
Okay. And with four now, would that fifth one be placed in a yard that doesn't have one?
I believe they're all based out of the same location, they're all based out of ninety-six and F, they're used throughout the city, but they're centrally based there, because they do maintenance on them and, and work on them out of that yard.
Okay, that's fine. All right, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And again, these were all in the bid doc, these were all part of the bid document?
Correct, they're all-
That called for these specific kinds of things within the, for this particular machine?
Correct.
What is, what is the cost of these machines?
Two forty-seven, two sixty-seven, in that range.
Okay, and this one, that, is those, are those the ones we currently have, or is that the one where you're asking to bid?
The ones that we currently have are actually, I believe they're a little bit more than that.
Okay. Okay, but this one you feel is better?
Yeah.
Okay, and it was in the bid specs again?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Jerem?
Mr. Kratz, the, you heard the, the bid specs, and you heard the deviation from the bid specs, in terms of the law, and appealing the bid rejection, if, if the council were to allow these deviations from the bid specs, would it open the city up to potential liability from, by claims from the winning bidder that complied with the specs?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, you are correct, we leave it up to the departments to make and outline the bid specifications, the only requirement is that they not be so narrow as to limit the competition. In this case, I don't know the numbers that submitted, if there are sufficient numbers submitted, then it's clear that there's sufficient competition, and specs are not so narrow as to prevent that. But you are correct, otherwise, it's, once we make those specifications, we need to stick to what those specifications are.
And then, if we grant an appeal for someone who doesn't comply with the bid specs and deviates, do we then set a precedent for future cases for other bidders that don't comply, to say, well, you did it in the case of Elliott Sanitation on June twenty-eight, two thousand and sixteen, so why can't you do it for me?
Absolutely you would, we've been very consistent in sticking with the specifications that are bid, and this council, I cannot recall that it's ever wavered from those.
So, Mr. McCoy, I didn't, do you have, how many bidders were there?
There were two bidders.
So you have the deviation bidder and the compliant bidder?
Correct.
And what is your assessment with regard to the ability of the marketplace, had they chosen to submit bids for the type of apparatus you specified?
There's not very many manufacturers that manufacture this type, the regenerative air, these two, and there may be one more, I think, but I think there's only a handful that could provide that type of regenerative air street sweeper.
Thank you. Well, I would say, at a minimum, the setting a precedent here for future non-complying bidders would lead me to feel like we ought to go with what our lawyer said, and deny the appeal, so that'll be my motion.
Second? I didn't formally close the public hearing, but we will, it's been moved and seconded already to deny the appeal, and the public hearing is formally closed, there's no motion and a second, and no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sixty-four is denied, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven eight, June opening being held July fifth, the second reading of public hearing, agenda items sixty-five through seventy shall be held on July twelfth, two thousand and sixteen.
Motion adjourned. Second, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We stand adjourned at two fifty-nine P.M.
Thank you. I know where Todd says, I just can't bring it up, bring it up in my head.